To Joanne. All right, so 7:00 PM, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. The town of Andover Board of Finance meeting Wednesday, February 23rd. Okay, thank you, everybody. Let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under indivisible liberty and justice. Thank you. All right, we have our first agenda item, which is public speak. Do we have any members of the public who care to speak? I see Nick's on from CBC, so Sherry or Amanda, I guess you guys are qualified as a public. If you don't have anything, we'll move on. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 3, which is additions and deletions of the agenda items. Do we have any tonight?
Yeah, I would like you guys to add Item 8C, CIP requests. There's no expectation that there's going to be any action on this. I just want to give you a verbal synopsis of what occurred.
Okay.
Yeah, beam me to it. It was an important meeting, I think.
I saw some, some activity there through email. So this is Item 8C under new business. This is titled, what, Eric? CIP?
I would just call it CIP requests for the 2022-23 budget year.
Okay. Anybody from the Board of Finance moved to add that agenda item? We really should have a board member make a motion.
I will so move.
Okay, so Rob so moves to add a new agenda item 8C, which is CIP requests for the... What was it you said, Eric? For the budget season?
Yeah, for the 2022-23 budget season.
23 budget season, okay. Thank you. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Louise. Louise, seconds. Do we have any discussion on this matter? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, motion passes. We'll add Item 8C to the, to the agenda as outlined by Rob and Eric. Thank you. Any other additions or deletions or changes? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to Agenda Item 4, which is the Town Administrator's Report. Most of you probably saw that Eric did email something earlier.
Yeah, I can give it to you verbally. First of all, I really apologize for sending it out that late. That was not great of me, but I'm kind of a little behind the gun on a lot of projects right now. So first of all, as many of you know, the Board of Finance has scheduled another meeting with the intent of finalizing their version of the budget on Monday, February 28th.
Board of Selectmen, Eric.
Board of Selectmen, sorry. Sorry. So the budget will be released publicly at that time, along with the revised budget book that addresses this. Some of you have probably seen preliminary copies of the budget book, but it will be updated to reflect the Board of Selectmen's choices. So you should have it in time. You have your first budget workshop scheduled for March 2nd. And if you all come up with a list of things you want to discuss on that date, or what items you want to cover, if you could give that to me, myself, and Sherry ahead of time, that would make our lives easier. So we're not prepping to discuss the entire budget, but portions of the budget that you want to focus on at the first meeting. If you can't do that, you know, we'll adjust, but that would make our lives easier. Secondly, I wanted to talk about a couple ongoing financial issues. The first is, we are, as I alluded to a while back, we would likely be, now we definitely are going to be overspent on the Public Works snow removal overtime budget. It looks like currently we've expended $16,433. So we're about $1,500 over budget at this point on snow removal, and it's supposed to snow again Friday. So we've just, while we haven't had that many really big snowstorms, we've had a bunch of small ones and a bunch of icing events. So we've actually put down, you know, a whole lot of salt. Close to a million pounds of salt already this year. And we've deployed Public Works quite a bit. So just be aware of that. The good news is, because we had a really big stockpile of salt last year, we're going to be able to not expend our whole salt budget and cover a lot of that expense with the excess funds in the salt. Now, the only downside of that is that's going to make us a little more vulnerable next year. Because given salt prices right now, that gives us the ability to purchase roughly 600, 650 tons of salt next year. Maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less. Salt prices are still pretty problematic because there's been a lot of shrinkage in that industry. So just to let you know that, that that's a likely issue to deal with next year. We are still going to need to cover some of the overages for vehicle maintenance from contingency. And that's assuming that we do transfer money in from the... So let me back up a sec. Last year, we had anticipated spending money from the capital fund for Public Works equipment to repair one of the plow trucks that had a lot of, you know, was really badly rusted out. We elected, instead of replacing the body, to just do a very expensive weld repair and replace a series of sections of the body and then repaint. We kept the cost under $10,000, which was a lot less than we anticipated. However, because it was no longer a capital expense, we took it out of Public Works Maintenance, which, there's no way the maintenance budget could absorb an extra 10, single $10,000 expense. We've also had some ongoing serious problems with the other, with Tom Pearl's plow truck. We just recently blew a rear seal. And that, that needs rear brakes and a bunch of other maintenance also. Although that truck has been a very reliable truck. You know, at this point, it's eight, nine years old, and it's starting to get into the more maintenance-intensive end of its, its life cycle. So we're likely to be, be definitely over in the vehicle maintenance, and we'll need to cover that from contingency. I sent to you today updated spreadsheets from Department of Public Works that outline those out of overages. I don't expect any action tonight because you just got them, and I have no expectation that you're all have been able to review them. So I think we should do that at the next regularly scheduled meeting and start talking about that, which will be good because that will be just before April, when we can begin to make transfers anyway, per the charter. The second issue that I just want to bring to your attention is that we have basically reached the 30% design stage for the Bunker Hill Bridge. And one of the items that happens at the 30% design stage is they update the cost estimates because now we know what the design type acceptable to the state is, what the length of the span is, and all the major parameters. So basically, the state of Connecticut has an estimating program based on all the bridge contracts that have been let out within the last two years, based on type to estimate what the cost will be. So the costs have increased pretty dramatically. Before, we were looking at roughly $2.4 million for the design, or for the build portion of it. And they're estimating just over $3 million now. And since we're liable for 20% of that, that means ultimately we need to come up with about $600,000 for that. And the reason I don't want anybody panicking about it right now is we've also probably pushed back the construction timeline to 2024. So we have one more year to get the money. So what we put in for a capital fund this year, I think is okay. And will still be in okay shape. There is some chance that we're going to get additional federal dollars. The state of Connecticut has not revised their rules as to exactly how they're going to do it yet. But there is significant infrastructure money, and there's some chance that either bridge projects going forward or past bid bridge projects may be eligible for 100% federal funding. We frankly don't know, or some fraction less than the 20% match, which we're required to do right now. So there's a chance that bill will go down, and there's a chance that bill will remain at $600,000. At the same time, I started the process to put the Long Hill Bridge in the design phase. Because basically, that means what I did was that we would be starting the paperwork roughly three years after we started the paperwork for the Bunker Hill Bridge, which means that puts us somewhere around 2027, 2028, 2029 for the start of construction on that bridge, given today's current, the delays. The reason why I think it's appropriate to start it now is, A, that bridge needs to be replaced, and B, there's a chance that the federal money will not apply to bridges already in the federal program, but we'll be forward-looking for bridges that aren't yet in the program. So I want to have one that's starting that process right now. So if there, if those are the ones they're going to fund completely, you know, we get one bridge in in that category. Again, I don't know, and we're not obligated to go forward. You know, all we're doing is the initial submission to get qualified for the federal program. Once we get qualified for it, then we have to sign up, and that, that's kind of a town or a Board of Selectmen decision, whether we do or we don't. But right now, you know, there's about six months, five months delay in doing the paperwork and submitting it. So I'm starting that process now. The other thing is that I'm planning on doing the exact same thing for two culvert projects. The first being the culvert on Hutchinson Road, the second being the culvert on Lake Road at Basola. Again, there's a pretty good indication that some of the funding available in the structure program will be for culverts and for things that are eligible under the state local bridge program, not the federal local bridge problem, project. So the downside of the state local bridge projects is there 50% funding, not 80% funding from the state. So I want to have a couple of those basically in the design phase and shovel-ready. So if they do announce that they are eligible for funding, you know, additional funding, and better than 50/50, we slide them in immediately. So that's where I'm trying to go from that. We know we're on the state local bridge program. We're obligated to pay for the design phase anyway, in order to qualify them for the program. So we don't lose anything by paying for the design now, and we hopefully speed up the process and get a chance to qualify for more federal or state aid for that. So that's kind of where I'm going with that. The other thing to be aware of is, as most of you know, inflation's kind of crazy right now. We're facing some really large cost increases for equipment. The other thing is that when I'm getting bids back from people, it's none of these 90 days, 90-day lock on prices. I'm getting bids back where they're guaranteeing the price. One of them I got back, they guaranteed the price for five days. And one of them, they guaranteed the price for 10 days. So the prices are so volatile right now, that's really affecting us. One of the biggest ticket items out there that we, we get every five years, or should be getting every five years, is a plow truck. The last Peterbilt plow truck we got, we paid around 200, or correction, around $192,000 for. That equivalent truck priced right now is $265,000. That's a more than $70,000 price increase, which is a little over 35% in just over four years. Part of that's due to the cost structural steals through the roof. But overall inflation for equipment costs is really going to bite us, and I just want you guys all to be aware that we're going to face that as a headwind going forward. So we'll talk about the CIP recommendation when we get to that. So I'm not going to discuss that. I've already talked about the further bridge work. The only other thing I wanted to say is, some of you were aware that we've been looking at doing a... Well, what we needed to do originally was electrical work in the town hall. We had a problem with that because the, our boiler room does not meet code currently because of the way the fill pipes are from the oil tank. And we have way too small a tank in the, in the town hall because we go through uncooled periods. We struggle to go seven days without running out of oil in the town hall, which is not good. We are, we looked into initially just replacing the tanks. It is possible to put two, 275-gallon tanks in and double our capacity by going to a more expensive double-wall tallboy tank, or tanks, plural. We're also investigating right now that the community center, it looks like they've settled on using propane for the heat source for that. That maybe now's the time to convert the town hall at the same time. The advantage to that, in my, from my perspective, is that we could go ahead and bury a couple, you know, 1,000-gallon tanks right now. And then that wouldn't, if we spent it out of monies we have in the building maintenance fund, that would, A, supply the town hall, that we'd be big enough to later supply a generator if we ended up doing a generator for both buildings and got away from the fire department's generator. And, C, you would already have the tanks in place. And so the million-dollar limit for the Davis Bacon rules for the community center, that would be separate from that because that would already be paid for, and you would just tie into the existing two tanks. So I'm looking at that way too early to, to have a full set of costs for that. But I think that's probably where we're going to end up going with the town hall. And that has the advantage of, by getting rid of the oil tank and getting rid of the fill lines, it gives us an awful lot more usable space in the boiler room that we need for the electrical service. So that's pretty much what I wanted to talk about at this point, unless you have questions for me.
Just one question I have. I was looking really quick through the budgets that you sent for the Public Works and the town operating. And I just noticed off the top real quick, I didn't get a thorough look at it. Some of the general ledger account numbers don't match what we have on our current budget thing, and I'm assuring the legacy ones from last year.
Correct.
They net up. Okay, that's, I just want to make sure. Okay, so I take several and add them together to come up to the same number.
Yeah, and Jay and I have talked about that. Eventually, we're going to, he's going to have to go through because he developed that last year under the old budget.
Right.
And it doesn't quite line up with the new, with, with all of the new chart of accounts. But it's going to take him quite a bit of time to go through all that, and he just hasn't come up with the time to do it yet.
What I intend to do, just kind of chime in on that, is I'm producing a crosswalk right now for Public Works in particular. And I will be handing you that along with other budget documents that you'll be getting. So that will make it a little bit easier for both Jay and for the board members to follow along.
So we'll have that before our meeting next Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Sheri. That's great.
Right now, I've cleared the report, and I'm going through, and I'm making sure that I have all the crosswalk completed before then.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Eric? Again, we'll talk about the CIP requests later on the agenda. All right, thank you, Eric. I guess let's move on to Agenda Item 5, which is our Finance Department Report. 5A is the town budget summary. So Sherry, you got this one?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
At least I think I do. In your packets are copies of the expenditure reports for January 2022 in detail format and also in summary format. I apologize for not getting you the revenue summary because I, with the holiday and all the other meetings that were required from the Board of Selectmen, I lost track of time, and before I knew it, was time to, to get that together. So I definitely will have that for you in detail, also along with the TAR account in detail as well. So basically, I think that's the only two things that I, I noticed today that were not sent over. I want to say that both Marina and I are working very hard on bringing everything up to speed. As far as journal entries go, we're trying to get a system going. We're not, we're doing two jobs and basically trying to cover everything, which is not easy, and it's a bit of a challenge. But it's not perfect, and we know it's not perfect, but we're trying to get there. And so I would appreciate it if you could just, you know, give us some time to turn this around and make this something that you're going to be happy with. I, I realize the software, nobody likes the software, nobody likes the reports. I get that. So I'm going to continue to try to include the columns in Diane that you have given me, and I will put them into Excel. You can generate the report now, put it in Excel, add the columns. It'll be a little bit more work, but I will certainly try to do that so that we have hopefully a report that you feel comfortable with.
Just from my perspective, when I was looking at the summary report that you sent over, and I don't, can't speak for everybody, but I don't really care about the summary report because it's too high-level for me. I just prefer the detail. So I'm okay if you, if, if everybody else is okay to ditch one report because I really don't look at it.
Okay.
I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
I can make note of it, and then if I don't provide it, and you find that down the road you want it, then it's, it's something that I can easily generate at a later date.
So if I'm understanding it, what you're, what you're don't, aren't interested in is the summary custom expenditure report, correct?
Because it's just everything rolled up to one number, and I really, I look at the detailed report. And if we add those few other columns we need on the detailed report, it will give us a lot more working knowledge of what's going on.
Yes. Okay. I certainly will work towards that.
Can I just follow up on Diane's question, just to make sure too? So is that, is that what it is, Sherry? It is the... When I'm looking at it, it's the last report. Is it just the total?
Yeah, it gives the total of 101 Selectmen, total 102 Town Administrator. It just collapses all those, excuse me, it collapses all those accounts into one.
Right.
And totals it for you. Some people like this. I mean, you know.
I'm just trying to look at my paper.
And they like the details. So it's whatever the preference is, and I'd be happy to arrive either one or both.
Sorry, I'm just trying to match one up so that I can just prove to my, and we can carry on. I, I have it all here. I think I got it a little mixed up. But I'm with Diane. I prefer the detail too. And if it helps even in a tiny bit for you up to more things that we'll meet eventually.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that, too. I don't really tend to look at it. I tend to look at the detail, and that's really where it comes up. So unless somebody else has something different, I would agree, we should take the burden off if it's not useful.
All right, so that time can be put towards other things that we can work on to get up to speed, which will be very helpful. So I thank you for that. Now, I'd like to also point out that when I'm going to do something different here on in, I'm going to invite Marina to the Board of Finance meeting. The reason why I'm doing that is because a lot of the questions that you've had in the past are things that she deals with on a daily basis. She does the detail. I manage her. I know what's going on. We communicate very well together. I would rather have that question, whatever question you have during the meeting, answered in its entirety at that moment than this back-and-forth kind of thing, you know? So I'm trying to make things a little bit more efficient. I'm trying to get you the information that you would like to get. And so by having her on board, she's also a world of knowledge. She does an excellent job at what she does. She's trying, just like I am. And we work well together. We work well as a team. I would say that this wouldn't work out at all if I didn't have as good a team member as I, I do Marina. So if you don't mind, I hope that, you know, I can invite her when, you know, need be to help answer all your questions when the assay come up.
I think that's a great idea. I have absolutely no objection. I can't imagine any of the other board members would either.
I think it's a great idea. I just have one question. Does that come at an extra cost to us on the town because she's elderly?
No, it does not. I asked that she do this as part of her job, and she agreed.
Even if it did, it'd probably be money well spent.
Right. I'm just saying, we're going into budget. So, you know, her salary, you know, year-to-date is over already, so.
It's a great question to ask.
I just want to make sure.
And I will answer that. The reason for that is that initially, when I came on board, the place was a mess. I'll be honest with you. It was an out-and-out mess. There was a lot of things that weren't done. So I needed her to do some of these things, and she worked overtime to get these things done in a timely manner so we could get the audit done, so we could get a lot of the other things caught up. So I could reconcile all of many bank statements that were sitting there waiting for me. So that has all been straightened out. So I don't anticipate any of that mushrooming into a lot of hours, you know? And certainly, if it come, push comes to shove, if that's not something that she wants to do as part of her job, then I will meet with her before the meeting, and we'll just go over everything in detail and hope, and make sure that I know a lot of the details that you're looking for.
So one other issue with that being over budget, and that's on me, is that I incorrectly, I did not account for Marina's raise last year when I budgeted for that position. So part of the issue with that, that line going over is the fact that I under-budgeted it.
Yeah.
And that's on me. That's not on, you know, Sherry or...
It makes it worse because if you're on, underfunds an account, it makes it look like people are collecting all this money. And that's not the case, you know?
We fixed that in the proposed budget, correct? That's all straightened out.
Correct. Enjoy. And you're muted. You want to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I'm trying to wave this time instead of just jumping. I work for the town and when I have to go to a night meeting at times because when budgets are tight, maybe I'm allowed to leave. I I don't know. I'm not trying to start something, but leave a half an hour early one day, attend the meeting for the portions that I have to go to.
Yeah.
Yeah, things like that.
Talked about, we talked about giving her more flexibility. So when she needs it and things are not, you know, taxing and everything's pretty well caught up. So we had talked about that as well. So we'll see how it it goes, but I'd like to start that immediately. Matter of fact, she is on, I see. So I think it's good for her to get some exposure as as my assistant and a good way of learning what it is that the boards are looking for, you know, firsthand.
And truthfully, the questions.
I'll go ahead and do it.
Sorry, if she's, we have been asking you a lot of questions, Sheri, and I'm glad you brought that to our attention because if, you know, I always call myself the worker bee. I'm the worker bee at work. So like I'm in it all the time. So I do have the answers. So but if if it is Marina that's dealing with it and doing the journal entries and that makes sense, you know, that you don't know.
I do some, she does some, we share and both the job. We're two entities. We're not just one. I'm not over there at the Board of Ed handling everything and she's not over there handling everything at the town. So we have to split our time up amongst two entities. Just keep that in mind. It's a challenge and there's a lot of districts that don't do this for this reason. But we're trying to do the best we can with it. And hopefully we'll get a point at a point where things will be run more efficiently and to your liking.
All right, sounds good. Thanks, Sheri. Anybody else have any additional questions for Sheri on the detail or the reports?
I have a question. Of course. Okay, not that it's anything new for anybody, but I do have a zillion questions from what I looked at on the detail report. But I want to ask a question about process. When these reports are run, do you get a chance to go through them and look for variances of oddballs and a drop? I'm trying to think about how to stop creating all this back and forth. Like you said, I would much rather have someone look at these reports before they come to us and eyeball what I do, all the variances and things that are going to go over and have a document that says, well, this is what's going on with each one of those. It's kind of what kind of the stuff that Eric does when something starts to get over. Otherwise, it's coming to us and we're putting our eyes on it and then asking all these questions and then going back and forth. So I can do it either way, but I don't know what the most efficient way is.
I do overlook the reports before I give them to you. The problem is, is that Eric and I haven't really been able to sit down together and work on a lot of that so that I can tap into his wealth of knowledge on the town side and to see what I should be looking for actually in particular ones. Some are easy to point out and others are not so easy to point out. So yes, I do do that and as time allows, I will try to get to that point since the whole entire report will be put into Excel. I'll make a notes column and go through that and give it a stab at it and see where we go.
I do agree that would be helpful and I think I think we'll find that meeting to meeting, you know, the same variances are going to pop up, right? I mean, if you're hundred and seven percent expended for your year-to-date. You know, this, the reason is going to be same next month is is this month. So hopefully it would be less work once can we kind of build that up and we'll just have to explain differentials and anything that comes up.
And some of those variances Eric and I went over in a two-page document that he gave me and said, let's do this, let's do that. This shouldn't be this, this should be that. And so a lot of those journal entries, I I went back and I looked at all these accounts and I'm like, okay, that means I got to reclassify it. And that's what I did. I reclassified it to the appropriate account. So a lot of times, you know, we have both of us looking at it, then it helps to see some of these things. And what is supposed to be, you know, an expense here and the operating could be an expense in the other accounts on the balance sheet, you know, that we have funds that are in there. So it's just a process of me learning all the different accounts. And truthfully, you have a lot and on this side and where the Board of Ed, it's pretty cut and dry. But this is is, there's a lot of variances to it and it's part of it is just me learning all of that to get to that point.
I mean, it becomes, you know, things are in the wrong buckets or there are things posted where they shouldn't, but we need to get it kind of cleaned up in the next few months because we've got all the transfers to do and I want to make sure that we have a good handle on it because I don't feel like I have a handle right now on some of the stuff because I see the stuff, the same things coming popping up every month and I know they're not right and they need to be fixed, but they're not fixed yet. So that's the kind of stuff that I want to make sure that we get a handle on.
Could you perhaps give me a list of those things that you're seeing where we can address them and go through them and make sure that we have.
I have a couple of questions. I'm not going to ask my gazillion and one questions. I'm just going to ask some high-level questions. I don't want to take up everybody if anybody else has any other questions before I go. I'm more than happy to let somebody else.
Well, you don't have to go. I mean, yeah.
But so right now, high level, we have an issue with the selectment account where you said it's ninety percent expense expended and that's based on Marina's input. That's really not true. There's something funky going on there that we need to fix. And I just want to make sure, you know, we get that done.
I just have a. Now, so the problem we have with that is I'm not really sure what the fix is because I'll tell you what happened is that we paid the first selectman as we normally do every year incorrectly because we zeroed out that budget last year. But we didn't catch it because the Board of Selectmen just get a twice yearly stipend and we gave the first selectman the first half of his stipend, which he wasn't due. The first selectman didn't really catch it because A, he forgot he zeroed out his own budget. And B, because he doesn't actually get the money, he just has that money paid to the federal government to offset taxes on his earnings. The problem is, is that if we had paid him, we could get him to repay us. But how do we get the federal government to repay us for money that we paid in in taxes incorrectly?
That sounds to me like you have a budget over.
I don't think you can.
By that amount for Jeff McGuire. Okay.
Here's the other problem. Problem B or two, whatever you want to call it, is that he got a W two for that amount of money. So, which means that that was also reported to IRS.
You you're not going to be able to change that.
And believe me, I do not want to adjust that at all. You start adjusting tax returns and you're going to have a whole mess on your hands.
So the problem is, is we took our first selectman general ledger account number, we should probably put it back in to budget. And so we can show that we had an adopted budget of zero, but we paid out X. So we know where the money is.
Right. So that would become a transfer, would it not? We'd have to put the money.
It's going to be an overage. It's going to be an unbudgeted item. So and then eventually we're going to have to find the money from somewhere to transfer it.
That's what I'm saying. We're going to have to find that money.
But we should put that item back into the budget with a zero budget and an expended year-to-date of what we paid.
You can't put it into the adopted budget. The adopted budget was what was voted on. That can't change.
Right.
The adopted budget is going to be zero, but we're going to have an expended year-to-date for Jeff. We need to put Jeff's.
Yeah, the expense line item needs to be recorded somewhere, but we just, again, this is something I think you'd have in as a variance that the, you know, the you know, mistake was made, a payment was made, it cannot be easily reversed and we're just going to accept the overage or whatever, but.
Right. And that's the way to clean that up. But there's other things going on in that account besides that.
Correct.
So those are the things we have to straighten out. We can't fix Jeff McGuire. That's over and done, water under the bridge. We just got to deal with it.
Correct.
The other thing. So so that's that question.
Okay.
I just have a question about the payment to the auditor, twenty-two thousand dollars. So this year we're paying him under his on an installment basis, I take it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That question. Do we know when we're going to have the audit complete?
Well, he's take the extension till February twenty-eight. I'm going to call him tomorrow to see where he's at with it.
I would love to have that before we have to even make a decision on this budget. I want, I really want to see that audit.
Yeah, I I will let you know that you have requested that and see where, see, the problem is, a lot of it is he's and his staff are working remotely. So they're reluctant to coming in because of COVID and it's been really difficult because we've had to scan everything to him, which we have and emailed him. So it's it's like both our sides, we're trying to get all the information to him that he has so he can do, put the audit together. It's not an ideal situation by no means. And I've offered to have him come in on like a Friday when, you know, I could make sure that nobody else is here, just him and I or his worker. And that hasn't happened, but I will definitely call him tomorrow and have a conversation with him. And then Eric, I'll let you know what his response is.
Sure. And when you do it.
Being late on an audit should be over. We should try and get this one done and get on track next year.
I agree. I, you know, I don't know what to tell you. I would like an audit done sooner than later, believe me.
Yeah, the other thing that when you speak to the auditor, just ask Mike what the timeframe is for producing. He's also going to produce the document that says where we are with ARP funding and and how much of last year's expense, in other words, how much how much leeway do we have to spend that based on, you know, the the effect of last year's budget?
Okay.
Revenue provision that he's calculating for?
Yeah, so he promised he would do that, but he said he couldn't. He had to have a completed audit to do it. Right. So and we were hoping to have that already because we really kind of need that, you know, for this year's budgeting to know what, you know, what the flexibility is in the ARP funding.
And I do believe they revised the calculation too, to make it easier. If it's going to make it easier. Question for you. I am on the tax collector one, one-on-one and the line item for thirty-eight equipment maintenance, this double paid bill thing that doesn't belong to the tax collector, which really is the assessor. When can we get that fixed? Because this is skewing everything here.
I've been playing phone with Leo. So it's been back and forth. He calls me on my town phone when I'm in the school. He'll call me over at the school and I'm on the town. So we've just been playing phone tag, but I think he's pretty much on board of just cutting a check back to the bill that was overpaid.
So if I understand this, and I don't think I fully understand it, this equipment maintenance tax collector line item, the description, what is it supposed to go in that budget in that item? Is that for generating tax bills? The cost of generating.
And using quality service.
Yeah.
Taxes.
That's essentially the annual fee for QDS.
Quality data services. They generate tax bills for us? Is that what it is?
Uh, yes, they do work for both the tax collector's office as well as the assessor's office.
Okay. Because when we're coming into budget, I have no idea what the proper budgeted amount should be for this account now because I can't.
We have it. We have a letter from him on the assessor and the tax collector in writing for twenty-two, twenty-three.
But we call equipment maintenance is kind of a hard, not really equipment maintenance. It's really printing.
Contractual.
You know?
It's an outside service, really.
It's an outside.
Using their their software.
Right.
Well, I mean, you know, in the in the line item for the assessor, we call that software assessor. You know, it wouldn't be a terrible idea, but it's not just software, right? Because it covers the cost of printing and it covers the cost of a bunch of different things for QDS. So I'm not sure exactly what the correct description for that. But I would agree that the current, which was essentially the same as the old description, doesn't really cover what it actually is.
A software assessor is the exact is QDS too?
Partially. Part of the soft, yeah, because the the software for the assessor covers two different software packages that the assessor's office uses.
Is QDS a software or is it a service?
It is.
Really, it's really a contracted service because it's under the four hundreds and four hundreds is classified as contracted services, basically. Anything that's related to the four hundred series for object codes. So if you want me to change it, I could change it.
Well, I don't know what to call it. So because I don't really know all the things that make up that. Do you know what I mean?
Well. You just have to find the term that.
Clearly not equipment maintenance, I think. So. So maybe maybe you just do it software and service, but I do think it needs to be changed because it's it's really, I would find that a little misleading. Eliminate a lot of these questions. So obviously we have a discrepancy between the object code and the description doesn't really jive. So it makes sense to update it.
So then becomes my question. I know we have this tax collector thing, which is the double payment. So as soon as we get that money back, that should make that line item come into line, correct?
Yes, yes.
So then when we go down to the four thirty-eight account for the assessor, we're at eighty-four percent. And I just didn't really know what goes into that number and are, is that going to go over? Or is there something?
I don't think so because.
I don't know how often we're billed on this.
So so I I can kind of answer that. So that's that line for the assessor covers in a normal year, it covers kind of three things. It covers QDS, it covers the vision appraisal, annual software subscription. And it covers the the, every year we should be doing updating to our mapping. Let's say, let's, I'll take for instance, there's a property down the street from me, actually my own property was never, the subdivision map was never changed in the assessor software package. And it's never been so, so it's never been updated on our GIS. So most years we spend about twenty-five hundred dollars updating the GIS information that the assessor's mapping uses. So that is the discrepancy. We've paid the bill for QDS for the assessor's office. We've paid the bill for vision appraisal. That twenty eight hundred dollars is roughly what we're likely to spend in the next couple months. To do the upgrades to the GIS mapping.
Cause when I looked at software, I just thought that was the vision. Because I'm just thinking of that as the software and there's more to it than that. Okay?
Right, they they use both vision and QDS. QDS is shared between the assessor's office. And uh, the tax collector's office because one has to flow, you know. One has to flow to the other, basically.
All right, um. Let's see, I'm not gonna talk about those. I have one question. I wanna ask a question about the library. And Marina's response back to me was ARP funds. That they got. And I need help understanding that because. So it's under library dues and fees. Um, it's one thousand and one and it's the eight hundred. So in Marina's explanation to me on that thing, she said they got some funds. From America relief. I don't understand what those funds are and why the library got them. So somebody needs to explain to me what funds they got and why the money's in. An expense.
The library received a grant.
A grant for what?
American relief. Money.
So, yes, separate from the town's allocation. Funding.
Yes.
Librarians in this country were eligible for a certain amount of funding. And they applied for and got that funding. Um, you know, by submitting a list of of things they wanted to spend the funding for. So they got money and that money was applied, I presume, was applied to their budget. As opposed to giving them a standalone fund because, well. Maybe you should have a standalone fund.
Yes, so my question is, it should go into the grants. Uh, under the funds. We, I think we have a miscellaneous grant category we could have put it into. Um, because I don't know what was eligible. So by putting it into here. I don't even know what expenses go into dues and fees. I really don't. Are those eligible expenses that we offset with our grant? I don't know. And with all this, you know, um, focus on auditing grant money and how the town spends it and everything. I wanna make sure it's really clean. And how we do it, cuz I don't know what that grant was for, what the eligible expenses were. You just can't plop it against an expensive count if it wasn't an eligible expense for that grant. And that's my question is understanding that. Cause I do believe we have a a miscellaneous grants.
Yeah, I'm just considering moving that over to the revenue.
Because I think, you know, from a town perspective and from a public perspective. We should be able to give them all the information of all the grants we benefit from, so they understand. How hard we work to get grants and it's it's an important thing for the public to know. It shouldn't be just.
Well, I would classify that to a revenue account. And then I will uh provide you with the uh documentation of what that entails.
And what what was eligible, cuz I don't, I wanna make sure that we just, you know.
Yeah. Grant awards letter and details on that, so I will look, try to locate that and then get it to you.
And I'll just, for the board's benefit, just from my perspective, with all this, um. Money that towns have gotten, all the press releases of uh. People stealing money and the, you know, cracking down on the county and the auditing side. I think the Board of Finance should be very well. On top of the oversight of understanding what grants we're getting and that we're spending them for eligible funds. We should be. And have some oversight into that.
Okay.
You know, I don't think we should, you know, wait till somebody says you did it wrong. Um. And. Because we know it's a hot ticket and the state has already said they're gonna audit every town for every dime they give you. So I just think we should just.
Okay, well, actually, what they've said is they're gonna make the auditor certify for every town. Um. So. Yep. No, you're right. And and there is a fair bit of visibility. And and I will tell you straight out, we've gotten three FOIA requests now for media outlets. Um, for we, how we spent not the ARP funds, but that previous round of funding and we've supplied them. You know, our budget details for that. Fortunately, all three FOIA requests were essentially identical. We had the information, so. I just cut and pasted it to the second two news outlets that requested the same thing. So you're right, that visibility is out there and there's a bunch of media outlets fishing. You know, no.
I think it's important for the town to, you know, taxpayers to understand of all the grant money the town receives and what we spent it on. You know, in generality, so everybody understands. How hard people work to look for money, you know, we're not always trying to raise tax dollars off of, you know, the taxpayers to get things done. And I think it's a, it's a good piece of information we have. Um, the only other side of the coin I'm gonna have is I'm gonna talk about all these funds. Uh, it's an audit item. I'll tell you one of the things I'm gonna be looking for from this budget year. I want an accounting of these funds, what we spent. In every one of these funds. I don't have that now. It's invisible to me. And um, we should have that. All these funds, equipment funds, fire department, road improvement funds, tree removal fund, bunker hill bridge, bridge and culvert, building maintenance.
Oh, you mean the thirty seven hundred account?
Yeah, the, yes, the thirteen hundreds, thirteen oh fives.
Okay.
These are, and it's it's an audit item on our audit, which I'm sure we're gonna get in the next audit, cuz we gotta set these up correctly so we can show. Expense side to these.
Yeah, but unfortunately, we we've got to work with the auditor to do that. You know, and we're trying, you know, the question, the rate limiting step for that is getting the auditor to work with us on that right now. And it has been for quite some time.
And we don't have to identify all of them.
We don't pay him.
What's that?
Unless he's doing the service we need him to help us with.
Why, I get that, but I have a feeling that we were the like the last resort client of his. And that's what I'm get, I feel for. And that's possible. I don't know. I'm just saying that sometimes auditors take on clients and they are so overwhelmed that they can't. Provide for all, so I will, um.
I don't wanna go into another year without these funds being set up correctly. I think, yeah, this is where a lot of our money in this town goes through these funds and we need to really know what's going on.
Mm hmm.
We, we're the oversight. That's what we're charged with. Um.
Correct.
You know, um, and it's been that, it's been an audit item for a long, I know way before you got here first, so I know it has nothing to do with you.
Yeah, I know.
You're part of the fix.
And he doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't want all of them reclassified that way. He only wants a certain amount. So I've been trying to nail down what ones is he referring to as a certain amount of them. I mean, I can see a handful of one ones that make perfect sense to me. Um, but I'm not sure that he is on the same page as I am, so. I really need, and I told him that, I really need you to help me sort this all out. Once and.
I guess I need a mechanism so us, so for us to track all the expenses that get booked against these funds. We fund these accounts every year. We spend money out of them every year. We should know what we're spending out of them.
Yeah, I will have to go through each account and develop detailed reports.
Because it's, it's like one third of our town budget. That's all I have. And I guess when I look at the accounts that are over a hundred percent. We have a bunch of them that are starting to hit there now. Some of them, I know, um, Eric has explained.
Yeah, anything that's material, though, I would say, I mean, if you're looking, if you're over an office supplies for the assessor by fifty bucks. I don't know that we should spend our time talking about that stuff, but.
Right.
You know, anything in this material over that we haven't really understood, why, why we're maybe off, that probably makes sense to do.
And this is not a lot of money, but I just ask a question. Electricity in the old firehouse were a hundred and thirty eight percent. I understand. Electrical rates went up, but conceptually in my mind, I think of the old firehouse as being vacant. So what is eating the electricity in that building?
So there's two things. One, you know, if you have electricity in the building period. You are paying for a meter fee and those meter fees have increased substantially. Um, number two, because we still currently store the buses and the vans there. Um, we do provide a minimal amount of heat and we do provide electrical power. Because we need to be able to run the overhead doors, cuz we can't get in and out without the electricity being on. Um, so those are the two things. You know, it's strictly vehicle storage. I would love to build a standalone Morton building or something. Get those things out of there and burn that thing down. Um, but until we actually do. You know, we're kind of stuck with a minimum cost to maintain that.
Okay, so that answers that question, cuz I did not know that.
Okay, and you also, there was also an oddball one for that where it showed there was about a four dollar expense or a two dollar expense for fuel. Um, and that was correct. They came in, we hadn't actually turned the the heating system on. And they came in the fall and went to fill the tank and were only able to put like a little over a gallon in it. Um, which they hence billed us like four dollars or whatever. So that was that oddball expense. You know, we find Marina tracked that down and and, you know, it was a legitimate expense. They did, you know, show up to fill. There just wasn't any oil uh to be added.
And then the other thing, and Marina addresses and explained it to me, but I just wanted to have a discussion point on this. Under the ground care, the mowing for ground care, I did not know. Uh, we have this cost for maintaining, and this is Veterans Park, right down by the Public Works on Long Hill. The soccer fields is what I'm. Um, I did not know we had rental income. That's coming in on that, and that's where offsetting an expense with income. I would like to see that income being an income item and keeping expensive. So we truly know what the expenses of maintaining those fields are. I don't think we should, and it's seventy five hundred dollars. It's not a lot of money, but if that money went away. It would be nice for us to know, gee, why is our cost so high? Or, you know, mowing. Oh, because we don't have any rental income, you know. It artificially lowers it, so it looks like. The expense for maintaining that field is a lot less than what it is, cuz we don't, I did not know there was income coming off those fields.
Okay.
So. Cause I was thinking, why is that so out of kilter? So. Cause when we go to do the budget, you know, if we look at our year-to-date expense and it's lower than what it actually is, we don't know how to properly budget. All right, I'm done.
Gary or Eric on the uh, on the budget line items or the expenditure line item, sorry.
I'll I'll do some turn-ons, she's to reclassify them, that's all. I know the amounts that are in there and we'll move to a revenue. Account.
If that's gonna be repeated, it's it's probably not a bad idea. Okay, and if nobody has anything else, uh, well, agenda item six is budget transfers. Uh, supplemental appropriations and over expenditure requests. I don't think we have anything here.
Reported.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
April.
April. Item seven is old business. Sorry, I missed this earlier. Both items are seven A, but it should really be seven A and seven D, seven A is the community center. Community senior center building committee. Um, does anybody have anything to report on that?
I'll give you an update on what I know. Um, cuz I didn't go to the last meeting, but I've kind of been. Talk about, we have our last round of revisions for the floor plan. Then it's gonna be going through the cost estimate estimator. Um, our goal is to keep the cost under a million dollars. Period. And, you know, and then our desire is to have the board of selectmen. You know, come up with a funding mechanism for that. And then we'll see how that goes.
So presumably, right now, between what is in the fund currently. And what is in the ARP fund, if you choose to use the allotment for that, you have roughly a million dollars. You know, sitting there ready to go. So presuming the public actually buys off on the plan. There's no, no reason you can't execute that today. Or at some point in the next year or two.
Oh, and it's up to the board of selectmen. I think when they vote on the budget, if they're going to actually. Take that fund money and move it into the building fund. That we have as a transfer for this budget, so the town can vote on it. As part of the budget process, so. Cause if we're gonna use that money, we would move it into the community center building fund. As a transfer.
You may not need to, but yeah, I'm gonna make it clear, I suppose.
Well, if we're gonna allocate the money for there, we should put it there so we have. Everybody can see.
Anybody have any questions for Diana on that or other comments?
I mean, I think the first thing that's gonna happen is you're gonna have to have a couple of public hearings. Um, and you're gonna have to gauge feedback. Um, you know, and you probably should have, you know, kind of a public hearing because that is, that would be a municipal improvement. Um. You know, and make sure you, what you've designed as a committee actually lines up with what the public wants. Long before you get to the point where, you know, you're you're spending the money. That's my take on it.
We plan on doing some kind of public meeting, but we have to get the floor plan finalized. In order to even conceptually get the final drawings done.
Yep.
And then realistically, it's timing wise. Cause spring is a busy time in this town with budget meetings and public readings and.
Okay, if no more questions for Diane on that, we'll move on to seven B town hall electrical upgrades. You addressed this a little earlier, uh, Eric, do you wanna? Should we even be keeping this on the agenda as an old business item or are we, you know, moving in a different direction there?
Yeah, I mean, it's something, the the annoying thing is that the electrical upgrades we really wanted to get to. But the problem is, there's just a bunch of things that have to come before that. So I think you could scratch that from the agenda for now. And then when we're ready to go, cuz that's the one or one of the things as part of that project that are expensive enough. That would probably have to go to RFP prior to doing it. Um, but we've got a bunch of things we've got to do ahead of time. Um, you know, so I don't think we need to keep that on the agenda at this point.
Anybody in the board have a concern about that? Okay, let's uh, let's strike that from the agenda from old business. We'll pick it back up if we need to. Thank you. Move on to eight, agenda item eight, eight A. Is the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services update to the town's radio system. Eric, this sounds like yours to handle.
Okay, I didn't actually realize this was going on the agenda, but I'll give you essentially an update up to this point. So what has happened is the state of Connecticut has agreed to build a series of towers and build out. So what has happened is the state of Connecticut has agreed to build a series of towers and build out the capacity for, for a statewide communication system that towns can adopt and become part of. Now, um, we've known this was a strong possibility in this area for about three years. Um, roughly two and a half years ago, I filed a bunch of paperwork with the state. That basically said, okay, how many radios potentially and what groups within the town would potentially utilize this service if it was built out? Um, the state has finally gotten to the point where it's kind of built out and usable. Um, so now we have to sign, the first selectman has to sign an agreement. Um, essentially a, a usage agreement stating that we are going to, or we want the ability to use this. So, uh, he may have already signed that, I know that he was, he and I discussed it and the fire chief discussed it. So the fire department has what they need to adopt the new system. Um, and the question becomes, does the town, do other town entities, does public works, potentially the buses and whatnot, adopt that same system? Um, right now we have radio systems that work, there are some dead spots in town. Um, it's far from perfect. The new system would be better. It would allow better communication between the fire department and DPW because their radio systems currently are not compatible. Um, you know, which is kind of annoying and it would allow communication between DPW. Um, you know, in other state and other town entities or other towns where needed. Um, so there's some real advantages to the system. The disadvantage is that if we were ever to convert, we would be looking at wholesale, uh, replacing all the radios in public works. Um, and that's a big hit. Um, Jay can give you a more accurate number than I can. But I remember when we looked at it, you know, two or three years ago, we were looking at like a sixty thousand plus dollar bill to do that. So while we agreed that we wanted the ability to join the system. Um, we, we were in no way guarantee, the state, you know, isn't mandating us to go to this. Um, we're not obligated to make the choice. Um, it would be something we would have to budget for, um, in a future year if we did it. And I think Jay can probably give you a better idea of the utility of the system. Um, you know, and, and what the advantages and disadvantages are.
Evening, everybody. So since, uh, since the last, uh, meeting with the, uh, CIP, when we discussed this, uh, there was a, like Eric said, there's a basic, well, if we were to do it all at once for the public work side, none of the, I'm not sure what the fire department's cost or possibly the buses, but just public works alone. It's a, it's in the area of that sixty thousand dollar mark if we were to jump in all at once. What I have found out since then, I was able to talk to, uh, the gentleman from the town fire dispatch. Uh, we can go in a little at a time. And basically we could buy two or three radios a year. Uh, a radio, a mobile unit for one of our vehicles, about twenty-five hundred bucks. Um, and then, uh, you know, plus install, but just to get started, we would have to have a minimum of a, a base unit and a mobile unit. And so you're talking, you know, less than ten thousand dollars to get, to get in and into it. Um, and then through the base unit. That unit can be patched between our current system and our new system. So kind, it's like a, acts as a repeater. So if somebody talks, it goes to that radio and then it's retransmitted to our other mobile units. So we do have some areas in town where we have bad, uh, uh, reception. Um, that might be an advantage at some point, I don't know if we're ready for it this year, um, planning wise. Uh, the other thing I found out and I wasn't too sure of is that, uh, the buses themselves can be part of the talk group. They would have their own channels. We currently have communication through a separate radio system with them. So we kind of monitor what's going on with them, so if they have an issue, uh, we hear it or we, you know, they can call us, we can call them. Um, and then if there is a specific bus that has, uh, like a special needs transportation. Uh, that's dedicated just for that, that can have its own, uh, channel. Um, as far as the talk group for the school system, because that was a question at one point. Um, like the internals of the school, that's not allowed on the system. Um, but the bus, like you said, the buses can have the system, public works, fire. Um, and then we have the abilities to talk to each other. So it can, it basically, long and short, is it can be done a little at a time. The beginning of, the way I understood it was, you know, we'd have to transfer all at one shot, but that's not the case.
You're muted, Mark.
Thank you. Uh, anybody have any questions for Eric or Jay on that? So that's a future thing, uh, it's good to know about that, good to know we have that flexibility also. Okay, thank you, Jay, and thank you, Eric. Uh, item eight B on the agenda is the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three proposed town budget. Um, this is a pretty simple item, right? We can just, uh, go through that, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if we have, uh, much to talk about here. Uh, we obviously have our schedule, we have our scheduled meeting and we expect the proposed budget next week, right, Eric? You got anything to comment on?
Yeah, no, I think there's, there's not that many changes that were outlined at the last meeting. Sherry and I, Sherry's got to produce it. Hopefully I'll get that tomorrow, we'll both review it and we'll get it to you. Um, as soon as the board of selectmen actually agrees. Um, I'm about ninety percent of the way through completing the budget book. And we'll give that to you at the same time, because that has a lot of the supporting documentation. Um, and the, the goal was to produce the Excel spreadsheet with the budget. At the same time, we produce the budget book, which has a lot of the supporting details. So that's the, that's kind of the goal. Um, which is a lot to get done in the next week.
We're going to get the school budget by Wednesday, too, the deadline? Or not?
I have no idea.
They're, they're voting on it. Um, there's a special meeting for them to vote on it.
So they're, so they're going to be a little late then?
A little. Um. Yeah, they, they scheduled this, a special meeting. So I won't have the group yet.
What's the date of their special meeting?
I want to say the third.
We're supposed to have a hundred and twenty days prior to fiscal year end, so. Mark, John.
Looks like it's March second, actually.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. There is an agenda posted on the AES website, on the Board of Ed section, so.
I had a question too, is that when we start the process? Um, I'm getting confused because I've been listening into a lot of meetings, but don't, does the superintendent come to one of our meetings to present it to us? Or do they go to the board of selectmen meeting? I'm remembering that from last year when Val was at the BOs meeting. And a lot of questions were asked, unless we're not doing that.
So last year Val presented at both. However, this year, um, given that they're not going to have a finalized budget till after the town is due to supply the budget to the board of finance. I would think it would be appropriate for Val to make whatever presentation she's going to make directly to the board of finance, not necessarily to the board of selectmen. Because you're ultimately the, the group that approves it. And the reality is the board of selectmen, while they can comment on it, doesn't have any statutory authority to modify anything in the school budget anyway.
Thank you, yeah, I was trying to remember the process because I know Ram presented at meetings and, you know, okay. I know it's getting started.
Got the Ram stuff and isn't Ram having a meeting? Or a budget meeting next week, this week, I don't know.
I did look on their website too, I was checking out there. I was looking for that big decrease, you know, but it, I didn't find it. It's still thirty million starting, but whatever.
Too many meetings.
Step by step. Thanks.
Um, I just have one question, I don't know if anybody has the answers to this yet. Um. I've been following the workshops for the school and the board of selectmen, so trying to keep up with everything. Um, what I see today from, that's been done so far on the school side, Sherry, is I don't see the level of detail that we would ask for, so I just didn't know if that was going to be coming to us once they approve it. And when I say level of detail, I'm talking about last fiscal year expenses, propose, the adopted budget, but the actual unaudited expenses were, what the proposed budget for this year is, the year-to-date expenses and then any revenue stuff that we have. And then the proposed, similar to what our worksheet looks like on the, on the spreadsheet.
There will be a spreadsheet that will be updated when they make their decision.
Because we'd be looking for those comparisons from year over year.
So I guess your answer is yes.
Okay, good, thanks.
Other comments or questions on the budget process? Okay, I think we moved to our agenda, item eight C, which is the CIP request for the budget year upcoming. So Eric, how do you want to review these?
Okay, so this will be presented, but probably by both Jay and myself. I'll give you the one over the world overview. Um, right now we have about thirty thousand dollars remaining in the public works equipment fund. We have proposed adding a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to that fund in the upcoming budget cycle, which will give us about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We're at the same time assuming that we're going to take probably between ten and fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars to be conservative to prop up the public works vehicle maintenance line item to account for the fact that we took the money from vehicle maintenance instead of capital last year. Uh, that we were not into, that we were anticipating taking from capital. That's ultimately your decision, um, on what to do and whether you choose to do that. That leaves us with roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars available next year. So it, given that a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, what CIP has recommended is that we authorize the purchase of a skid steer, which is about seventy-five thousand dollars for public works this year. And then sometime in the next budget cycle, so in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, we authorize the purchase of a plow truck for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four plow season. And the reason why we have to do it a whole budget cycle ahead is that best case scenario, we have a six to eight month time lag to get it, so we can't wait till the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget season to authorize the purchase of the truck because we won't have it when we need it. So the, the way it works, if we take out the seventy-five thousand dollars, there's just enough remaining in that account to fund the first, um, payment. And because this thing, the, the truck is going to be, you know, uh, somewhere around a two hundred and forty thousand dollar, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, expense. And that's well over, you know, one year's contribution to the public works equipment fund. We're going to have to finance that over a period of years. And so if you think about, you know, what, uh, four years of that looks like. Um, that looks like somewhere around, um, sixty thousand dollars, which is basically just what we have remaining in that fund. So what I'm saying is we can pull it off, it's going to be tight. Um, but it is doable to do, to do CIP's recommendations. Um, obviously, I don't think we're going to ask for any action tonight. Because, you know, we don't have the money in the account right now to purchase or agree to purchase anything anyway. Um, and until we have a budget in place, I don't see any way we can do that. Um, but we've given you the information on what the purchases are. Now, the big dilemma we have in the problem we're fight, finding across the board is prices are so volatile right now, especially because of, you know, the lack of many things that, um, you know, there's no guarantee the prices that we have in those quotes today are going to be valid um, in five months or six months when we go to, to pull the trigger. So I just want you all to be aware of that. Um, you know, I'm finding like right now, uh, both the electrician and plumbers, you know, are willing to honor a price estimate they give me for ten days, sometimes five days, because their materials costs are so volatile right now. Um, and, you know, for instance, the, the cost basis for doing the work at public works increased pretty considerably uh, for when we originally bid it, you know? Uh, which was five months ago or four months ago to now, just because materials costs are, are going up so rapidly. Um, so that's what I want, that's the overview and Jay can give you the details, which you also got today. Uh, you got all the, the bid docs on that.
Get into the details. The skid steer is seventy-five K and you want to fund that out of this year's budget?
Not out of the current budget. I want to fund that out of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Because we couldn't fund it out of the current budget anyway, we don't have the money.
I was saying, so, so you're talking, these are both going to be next year events.
Correct, they're going to have to be.
Yeah, the, the only thing that I could, uh, add to that, um, basically the, just to, uh, clarify, the skid steer is, uh, quote, is good till March second and the truck is good till March eleventh. And then basically it would have to be requoted. Um, and what Eric was, uh, uh, explaining, you know, any, if funds were available. Um, you know, funds wouldn't have to be expended until after the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. But it has to be, go through the approval process before we can actually, uh, you know, commit to signing.
So you, you was kind of purchase contractor, it would basically lock in that price and financing. But the actual payments wouldn't occur until next year?
Yeah, until, until we receive, you know, set equipment. Um, and then on the truck itself, it, it's a little less than two forty, but you know, call it two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, five-year, uh, payment is fifty-one thousand dollars a year.
Eric is increasing interest rates likely to, well, I guess this is the whole deal, is that this is good till March second or whatever, and then everything's off the table and we start over on that, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was looking at it and I, I think objectively, you know, you couldn't ethically. You can't really pull the trigger on this because it's funds we don't have currently. So it would be ideal to lock it in now and ask for July delivery. Um, when we could actually pay for it, but I don't see how we can, I mean, you know. I mean, I suppose we could borrow against a different fund and do that, but that gets, that gets a little sketchy. And what happens when we get to the budget process and, you know, the, we end up having to trim that account back considerably because we can't get the budget passed. So.
Or talk us, and we're still doing budget meetings.
Right, right, you know, and, and ideally we'd like the piece of equipment at the beginning of the construction season. But I just don't see how that's, you know, legally and legitimately possible at this point.
Yeah.
Do you have to go back to CIP if these prices significantly change? Or is the approval, the approval conceptually for the equipment? And they have nothing to do with the price?
I mean, they proved it.
It's ultimate. It's ultimately the board of finances decision on whether to finance a piece of equipment or not and where to take the money from. CIP just they do, do we need it? Is it a valid expense? You know, what what recommendations would we have for the the specifics of the machine and what should we buy? You know, but it's really the board of finances purview. Whether you finance or not and you know, whether you approve the expense or not. So that's really on you, not not on them. So I don't, I guess that's a long winded way of saying that unless it was a radical price increase. I don't think it would have to go back through CIP. Um, I think the board of finance would just have to, you know, agree to the price increase. Whatever it was and agree as to how what they wanted to do for financing. Um, the other thing I want to be clear on is that I don't think, you know, although we have some terms of finance listed. On the documents, it looks like nobody's willing to set in stone what their finance terms are. Until the day we're willing to sign a contract, basically, you know, because I think everybody's understanding. Yeah, that interest rates are probably going to go up also.
Yeah, there's there's some anticipation that of that probably already in there and yeah, okay. Alright, so it sounds to me like. And I agree with the Eric, I don't know what the mechanism would be by which we would even authorize this, even if we did have this information in advance. So it sounds to me like this is primarily advisory at this point. That this is going to come down the road and we need to consider this for the next budget season, but we really cannot take action on this at this point.
Well, I mean, I think you should. You should review the information and it would be nice at the next budget meeting for. The board of finance to at least make a decision whether they would support this in the next budget. Um, so we put that information in the budget book. So it's clear to the public that, you know, we intend to spend for that on those items.
Right.
Even though it's basically in the budget book now because it's in the um, the capital equipment. Proposed capital equipment list.
Question for you and this proposed budget. You're at proposing an addition of a hundred and fifteen K, right?
Correct.
The capital, so. Out of that, we're going to have to pay that whatever the first payment is for that five years. So for the next five years, we buy this truck where I have a payment. That's going to really impact our contributions to the capital equipment fund.
Absolutely, because.
Does that do to us in the next five year? We're not going to buy anything for the next five years or?
I mean, that is the problem Diane is that, you know, over a fifteen year per period. Up until this latest big inflationary spike, the amount we were putting into it was roughly equivalent to what our. Fifteen year capital needs are. Um, the only problem was we did, we do acknowledge that we had to front load a lot of it. Because we let our equipment get so far down, you know, deteriorated that we did incur a greater than. Average expense the first three to four years and we're still in that period now. But you're right that the fact of the matter is, you know, plow trucks are expensive. Um, and especially now that we're looking at spending two hundred and forty grand, you know, every five years just on a plow truck. That takes a really big bite out of the capital funding available for public works. Yeah, no question. Um, and if we could increase that fund, that would be great, but the reality is. You know, we're looking at such a high budget increase. I'm not sure we're going to be able to go up from that, you know. I'm not even guaranteeing, you know, I I'd be foolish to say I was guaranteeing. We'd even get all the way through the budget season with a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in that fund. I mean, remember, you know, four years ago, we were consistently budgeting somewhere around twenty thousand dollars for that fund. Which is why we're in the hole we're in now because we under budgeted it for so long, we let everything fall apart. Um, so. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and we have a lot of construction work on our plate for the next um, ten years that we want to get done.
Yeah, no question, but the other thing to consider is that still the most cost effective way to do it. Is to do work in-house that you're capable of doing. Um, so yes, it's it's definitely an added expense. But the cost of subbing it out by and large is greater. Until you get into very specialized things like bridge work, culvert work. Yeah, you can argue that you're better off to sub that out. Um, and there's a lot of things that are not within our own capability. We don't have our own paving box. You know, we're not doing our own shimming. All that stuff has to be subbed out, but all the work you can do in-house, we should be doing in-house.
Okay, question on the skids here. We're not replacing equipment currently, right? So what's the purpose of the, what's it going to be used for? I mean. I kind of know what they're used for, but I'm curious specifically why the addition of the uh, of the skid steer.
That's that would be a new addition to the fleet. Um, it's a multi-purpose machine, multi-seasonal. Uh, we have several attachments that are going to be included with that snow blower auger.
Do you have the trailer and equipment to be able to move it to where?
Uh, we don't, we don't have, well, I shouldn't say we don't have a trailer. The trailer we do have is is our uh. Uh, twenty ton trailer, which is plenty big enough. It's oversized for it, but we would be looking to. Uh, get a new trailer at some point, you know, for a smaller, it's a smaller piece of equipment. Um, and the trailer for that be about ten thousand dollars, but we're not looking to do that right at this point. Um, but it'll just make us more efficient. We can do much, you know, smaller work if we got uh, small work. Compact areas, we can get in, get out, go on to the next job.
Why no DEF? Is it just the engine size or is it a gasoline engine?
This this particular machine does not require DEF. Uh, Bobcat does not go through a region. That's one of the. Um, points to this machine that was so attractive. It does not go through a regeneration process and does not have DEF fluid.
Does burn clean enough as is, I guess, or produce it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's also size. It's a small enough machine. The bigger machines seem like they pretty much all have to use the regen. And the DEF, but some of the smaller diesel equipment. You know, I don't know whether it's changing different regulations or whatnot, but it seems like not all of them have to. I don't know, maybe you know more about that than I do.
That's just a little bit smaller horsepower, uh, and it if it goes up in. I think it's a matter of three or four horsepower, then it's into that next size and then it requires the DEF fluid and. And regen process, but Bobcat's been able to tune that motor for the pollution control controls that it has. It doesn't require it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I only know the on-road stuff, not so much the off-road stationer. Alright, um, other questions for Eric and Jay on this topic? We'll clearly take this up at our next meeting, I think, um.
I just have one quick question, Mark. Um, maybe it was said at the beginning, but how many plows does our town have right now?
So currently we have four plow trucks, four primary plow trucks. Well, no, we have three primary tri- plow trucks and then we have one emergency reserve. Our emergency reserve is a ninety seven. Uh, Ford plow truck. Um, and basically we have a two thousand nineteen, a two thousand and fourteen. And a two thousand and four plow truck. Um, and realistically, our our kind of long-term goal is to maintain three primary truck plow trucks. That are fifteen years old or less, um, with the emergency spare between fifteen and twenty years old. Because that's fifteen years is basically, these things go through a pretty hard life. Um, a lot of municipalities change them out much sooner than fifteen years. Um, certainly the state does. Um, you know, but I think doing a good job of maintaining them, especially if we go with the stainless. Or the hard ox bodies, um, you know, we can, we can keep them. Let me just say beyond fifteen years is a primary plow truck. You start to incur pretty excessive expenses trying to keep the things on the road. Um, and so the goal is to keep the three trucks in the reasonable maintenance category where we're not really suffering from accelerated. Cost of maintenance.
And do all the guys currently on your crew, Jay, do they all have their CDL? Do they all, do you have four drivers right now?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I I think I've heard that in different meetings. Okay, thanks.
Right, so basically, so that you all know, we we run three, three primary plow routes. Um, and then depending on what's going on, uh, we have one part-time helper, Mark Williams. And uh, and Jay also plows, so the three primary drivers plow the big main routes. And Jay and Mark Williams help out at intersections and parking lots. And then fill in and then if we had a driver of a primary truck plow truck out. Um, either Jay or Mark Williams would fill in on the primary route. And that's basically how we do it.
Thank you. It's necessary. Yep. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Wouldn't be able to keep up otherwise. Yeah, the small sto- small storms I can keep up with parking lots and. Uh, some intersections, the bigger storms, which if we get into that, well, Friday will need Mark, but uh. You know, all hands on deck.
Okay, thank you.
An another quick point, uh, on the plow truck current currently. Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, the payloaders on a budget cycle or a payment cycle that's coming off?
Yes, the the payloaders coming off, it's it's payment, uh. Its last payment is due this month, so and it's already budgeted for in this year's budget.
Yeah, so. And these two pieces of equipment, we'll we'll be lucky if we see them by winter time of next year. If if they pass, when, you know, at such time.
So what's the backlog on getting the skid steer? That's something we hadn't really discussed.
It's, yeah, it's like, we'll be, we'd be lucky to see it probably in the fall. I don't think we're going to be getting it right away, uh, you know, just availability of them. They got to build it and whatnot. Um, but it would be, uh. Between early and early fall to, um, beginning of winter is my guesstimate. Based on the conversations I had, uh, since the new uh, quote, uh, which I didn't ask the gal in North Dakota, which I could. Um, I could probably get, uh, an idea from her. I could email her and and get it, uh, maybe a little closer. Because the purchase would go through their their uh, main branch in North Dakota.
Right.
And serviced by Bobcat in East Hartford.
Right, and what is the backlog right now for uh, getting a freight liner built and then getting the body put on it? Do we have?
I'm told, I'm told by Freightliner, they have some build slots uh, available right now. Chassis would be, uh, um. End of the summer, well, not end of the summer, it'd be early fall, so maybe, um. Beginning of winter, end of winter.
So if we pull the trigger right now, we we could potentially have it. So which which is another way of saying that basically sometime, you know, as soon as we're in budget season. You know, or next August, we need to be ordering it for twenty three, twenty four then, correct?
Yeah, the, you know, the longer it's, the longer it's delayed, the less build slots are available. And uh, it, you know, it's going to put it out that much further and, you know, costs go up.
Yeah, I know the last time we ordered one, it was basically nine months from order to, uh, we had the thing in the garage roughly.
Yeah, um, they're telling me on the truck six to eight months, um. More on the eight month side to a year, but uh, uh, it it depends on, uh. Like I said, Freightliner has some slots, uh, the way they build, um. They're allocated each uh, dealership has allocated so many build slots and they're filling them. And as soon as those are gone, there's none left till next cycle, which is next year. So from. Next year, you're even that much further out. It'll be, you know, another six months or so because it'll take that much time to get it in. And then have it built.
Right. Yep, that is the dilemma. Mark, you're on mute.
Other questions on this topic? Supply chain keeps me up at night. That's, uh. It's no fun for anybody that things are going through now. It's tough.
Yeah.
Alright. Um, well, if we hear no one, no other questions, we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item nine, which is the approval of meeting minutes. Uh, Eric and uh, Jay, thanks for your participation. That was helpful. Okay, uh, number nine, the meeting minutes, uh. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from last meeting?
Approve the meeting minutes from January twenty six, twenty twenty two.
Hey, Diane moves to approve the meeting minutes. Anyone else? We have a second?
A second.
Linda seconds, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, say hi. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, guys. Item agenda ten, agenda item ten is the liaison reports and we already heard about the senior slash community center building. We have any others? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to eleven, board open discussion. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to bring before the board tonight?
I'm bummed it's going to snow on Friday. That's all. After today, I've got it.
Sorry, winter's not over yet.
Oh, I want it to be gone.
Not quite, potato is right, not quite.
Mark.
Yeah.
I'll make it really brief. I know I emailed you earlier today asking about the letter in the the non-lapsing account that AES. You know, asked to use, but I'll just take a look at the letter. I mean, I've heard things in meetings. My primary, refresh me, did the letter give us an explanation as to why they were asking us so soon in the year?
Well, they weren't asking us to do anything. This particular letter was mostly advisory and it just said that they had voted. Um, to, uh, because they had an outplacement. Uh, they hadn't voted to or decided to move some, um. Uh, deposit into the account, let's see, blah, 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 blah. The the board of VAD voted to approve using money from the two percent non-lapsing account to cover the costs of the unexpected special education outplacement. So they're moving money from the two percent from the account that they normally would put that two percent in to cover this. Uh, I I'm expected outplacement, so it was, it didn't increase or move any money from their, within their budget. They just use the money from that non-lapsing uh, uh, account to cover that outplacement.
And my only question was, and the way I, just because I know we're going to get so into the budget, the only reason I brought it up is it seems. Early in the year to dip into that, you know, that was my only, so I'll read the letter. I would think in May, you know, I was waiting for them to see where the budget might lie, see if they might have a little bit. Of other money that they've moved around in the past. That that was where I was going with that. It just seemed strange to hear such a request from a school system in January.
Well, I, you know, I think that they had kind of warned us that they were concerned about an increased outplacement and it was about ninety grand. Um, those things are expensive, everybody knows, so.
Oh, yeah.
And it felt like they could cover it other ways.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that tonight because I know I, thank you for sending the letter. I'll take a look later.
Okay, once again, is there anything specific that the board wants from myself and or Sherry? Prior to the first budget workshop on the second.
Question, cause I can't remember everything that's in the budget book that you're gonna put in there, but I would be. Wanting to understand. What projects we completed last year from the. Construction, road maintenance site and what anticipated for the future. And is that all spelled out in there?
Uh, a lot of that's in the budget book. It's certainly not all in the budget book. Um, but the majority of that, of what you're asking is in the budget book currently.
I just think the public would wanna know if we're putting, what are we asking for? Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars or something in there? They would wanna know what it's, what it's going towards and what have we, where are, where, state of the union, where are we at? What did we do? What do we need to do, kind of thing?
You know, you've done a pretty good job in the past of understanding, you know, kind of explaining with the cost per mile for different types of. Approaches to either remediation or repaving, um, you know, that may well have gone up over the last two years. I'd be surprised if it's dead, yeah, everything else is.
Yeah.
But, so, yeah, I think it's, I think it's good to have that background context as much as possible. We don't certainly need it for the next meeting, but as much as we can have as supporting, it's gonna help this thing move on smoothly.
Sure. Yeah, and, and I also get that this is gonna be a big ask.
It's a big ask, yeah.
There is a significant budget increase and, and I get it, you know, and I understand that. Um, it's not necessarily all possible. Um, I, I'm firmly aware of that, so. Um, let's work together as best we can. Um, you know, if you as a board decide that there's a specific target you need to hit. Or you think that's doable with the public, you know, the earlier you can let me know and we can try to figure out what. You know, what we could do to accomplish that. Um, this budget basically lays out what the Board of Selectmen's priorities are. But ultimately, the, the final decision on the budget is yours. Um, I'll support you any way I can. You tell me what information you want and Sherry and I will try to get it to you.
And the other piece, I don't know, and I know because we're asking for. A part-timer and another full-timer in Public Works. Do we have documented? In that budget book or some kind of documentation of, of the reasons why we need to? What, what does this get to the tech, get to the town? What does it bring to the town by adding these positions? I think, you know, whenever you're talking add to staff, people wanna know, well, what does it get us and why? And I know you guys talked a lot about it, the Board of Selectmen, but I'm just thinking from a public perspective. Information, cause people focus on that.
Okay, I will try to add that to the, the budget book. Remember, it was only a day or so ago when I knew the board was actually going to include that in the budget, so I hesitated to put too much detail in there.
At the Board of Selectmen level, reasons why, but I think, you know, taxpayers have that kind of background.
Sure.
All right, thinking in the interim, I'm sure any of us, we think about something, we can, you know, you can send it to Eric or, and, and copy Sherry and let them know. Okay, here, here's, you know, here's something I just thought of, we wanna be able to talk to and understand.
Right, um, and what I would say is that, you know, do you have a feel for what you wanna focus? The first workshop on, yeah. Um. I mean, we could, one easy one would be if you wanted to review all the capital requests, we could do that first. For instance, because that's, that's, you know, it's not easy. But at least, you know, we could go over that or, you know, just. Give us direction as to what it is you want to, do you wanna do an overview first? Do you wanna look at capital first? What is it that you're wanting from us for the first workshop?
Good question, you know, I think, I think it always helps to do an overview, right? And as long as, you know, we kind of all understand and agree, it's just an overview, we're not gonna dig into the details, you know, with that initial overview. And then, you know, we have our, we have our capital expenditures, we expect, we have our funding, you know, the funds. We have our departmental budgets, um. You know, cap- capital expenditures would not be a bad thing to talk about. Um, it's, that's, that's a big topic, especially if you're including, are you including roadwork in that? Probably.
Yeah.
Are we gonna collapse those two road funds together, tar and roadwork?
Yeah, we are, but we're not gonna do it until we set up the actual standalone funds. Um, which requires the help of the auditor, but yes, I think we are gonna, just essentially going forward, we'll roll, roll tar. Into the roadwork fund. Sherry, you agree that's the approach?
Yes, I do.
She had looked like I wasn't sure she wasn't gonna agree with you on that one.
Well, we have a roadwork fund, we just have. We just have to put tar into it, really, we don't need, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And there's no, most towns do do that. Um, you know, the only thing is that there are things specific to. You know, there are some rules that the state applies to town aid road funding. They're pretty broad. Um, but, I mean, technically, we have more flexibility with other funds. Because those are strictly your decisions rather than, uh. You know, guidance from the state on how they can be spent. But practically, given what we use the funding for, there's no issues combining the fund and it makes it cleaner. Cause you just have one funding source, you know, you put money into it, you take money out of it, you account for it en masse. So I do agree that that's a better approach, um, than having two separate funds that you can kind of spend interchangeably. In the past, what we'd done historically, before we had a permanent fund. Is whatever money was allotted for roadwork in a given year, that would be spent first. And then they would spend out of town aid road. The reason being, town aid road money can accumulate and roll. And the old budgeted system, it could not roll. But now that we've changed to a standalone fund for that, that can roll from year to year. Um, it makes more sense. Um, and part of the reason it makes more sense is that. You know, to, to do roadwork economically, you need to really be starting in May. Um, you may be crack ceiling and you may have all these initial expenses. You know, so, so we're always holding some money over, like, we still have quite a bit of money left between town aid road. And the roadwork fund, um, and it's not because we underspent any last year. It's because we're holding back money to spend before July one, in the end of this fiscal year. Um, so it always looks a little suspicious that there's quite a bit of money left over in that fund. And that's simply because it's much more, it's much smarter to have that money available early in the season. Once you can do a lot of your work before July one and to a lot of, a lot of contractors. Because a lot of towns won't have the funding till July one, um, it makes life easy and sometimes there's more flexibility. I know that was a really long-winded explanation for a very simple question, so I'm sorry about that.
It makes a lot of sense. I think it actually was helpful explanation.
I had one last thing. I know we were looking for what we're gonna go over next week and I, I didn't get to look at what you sent us, Eric. Did you send us just quickly, like, the budget, the spreadsheet, or you sent us a report?
I haven't sent you, I sent you a report, a whole bunch of stuff for CIP. Um, and the public works, like, where we are right now in terms of, and forecasting for this year. I have not sent you the actual budget. Um, the, normally what we do is as soon as the Board of Selectmen approves it. It will go directly to you and it will be a public document at that point. Up to this point, it hasn't been really a document shared with the public. Um, you know, we could, Sherry and I could give you a copy today, but. Changes to make.
For what I was gonna ask right now, I didn't wanna say something if you already, yeah. So thank you for that. So going forward, you know, I know they're meeting Monday, you know, once you send it after that, I know we're gonna be meeting weekly, so that's fine. Um, like, like Mark said, just kind of an overview of the whole budget. I know that a couple, you know, a few of us have tuned in from time to time, so. We might have heard a little bit more, but I think it's good for all of us to hear it as a group, like you said. And then, when you're talking about the new positions and what Diane mentioned, you know. Why, you know, I appreciate hearing that too. I've heard a little bit of it. Um, if we could have the dollar figure, like, okay, adding the Public Works full-time guy. You know, what the seasonal person's gonna cost, um, you know, just having those dollar amounts will be helpful.
Sure.
I know we're gonna be all over the place and then dissecting it section by section, but that's my two cents to help from this.
Just one quick question, the updated budget documents you sent over for forecasting where you think you're gonna be with Public Works. That's through what date? Because the numbers are different than what we have for, in our current financials. So is that through the end of January?
That would be a Jay question, not an Eric question.
So that, if extra expenses, the approved expenses are through what month?
So, uh.
And then. Yeah.
Do you want me to answer that? So Eric, I'm assuming you sent everybody the email that I sent you?
Correct.
With the attachments?
Correct.
Okay, so basically, if you, if you haven't already, you look at each of those attachments, that's the spreadsheet I use. That I made up, that I brought with me, uh, and I kind of adapted it to, uh, your, the. Budget, budget line items that were available when I got here. So, basically, you have, uh, the summary page of each budget. I'm gonna click on one, cause I gotta look at it at the same time I'm speaking.
So you got. If you want, you could just share that screen so everybody could see what you're talking about.
How do I share it?
Uh, ask Amanda. Amanda, can you let Jay share his screen?
Go ahead. Um, at the bottom of your Zoom, you'll see a green little arrow button that says share screen.
Okay, hang on just a second.
You got this, Jane.
I'm trying, give me, all right, I see share screen. Now, will this let me, will this let me share the screen that's on my other, uh? Cause I'm looking at it on my other monitor.
Yeah, as long as it's, as long as it's part of the same computer, yes. So just click share screen. And it should give you everything that's open. I mean, if you're like me, you got eighteen different things that are open, so you gotta figure out which document it is, then click on it, then say share.
All right, I'm learning, I'm, uh, up to learning something every new every day.
Woo, you win.
So, did it work?
Uh, we're looking at the email.
Looking at the email. Oh, now I gotta, all right, hang on. So now how do I share the, uh?
Open that document, I think.
I did.
Hit the little.
If you have one of the documents open, what you have to do is you have to say, stop share on this.
Yeah.
And then you have to stay share on that new document, uh, click on wherever that document is.
Okay, here we go. How's that?
Hang on a sec. You got it.
You're looking at, all right, so you're looking at the operating side.
Correct.
And as I'm scrolling, you're seeing that?
Yep, you got it.
Okay, so we're scrolling down through, this is my summary of that account. Which you'll see at the bottom. It has the, you know, the total budget, the group approved expenditures pending and future. All right, and it leaves me with a deficit of eight hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-four cents. That's what I'm predicting to the end of the year as of today. Does that make sense?
Okay, so questions, go back, go back.
Okay, go, go ahead.
When you go back to, hold on, say, current, oh, let's stop, stop, stop.
Oh, sorry.
Stop, when you say approved.
Right here.
Right, total approved expenditures, like, one seventy-four. What is that through what date? Is that the number through the end of January? And then pending would be everything that's not posted yet?
Correct, so this is more a real-time, what I submit to finance. So anything, any bill that I submit to finance, uh, invoice statement. Uh, I put into my system.
Okay, okay.
So I track my expenses, uh. I don't know, I guess in.
All right, so the numbers are, okay, so your number should be the most accurate number for what we spent here to here, so far.
With the items that I have, that I oversee, uh, in, in these budgets. So, as you scroll down, now you get into the individual sections of the budget, like, here we are at salary. So basically, the last report, and I've been talking with Sherry and Marina on these quite a bit. So the last time I talked to her about salary, the finance report, you'll see the last time I asked was in December. And then, just so I stay ahead of myself, so it forecasts out my future expenses, the balance. So, leaves me with a dollar and forty-four cents. So basically, in my world, I've already spent the money. Does that make sense? In wages?
Yeah, you're, it's the equivalent of encumbering it in the system. You already know what the expense is gonna be, so you forecasted that, so you don't spend more than you have.
Right, so when we go down to maintenance now, I'll, I'll just speak to this quickly, I mean, we, as. You go to the other ones, you'll see it a little bit better, but, or, you know, at your leisure. But in the maintenance line item. We had eighteen thousand five hundred dedicated to us. Uh, we did have some big expenditures this year. We've already expended twenty-four thousand seven ninety-four and sixty-eight. And as you scroll down, so those are my approved expenditures in the bigger part, the stuff that I've already submitted to finance. What I have pending right now is those items that you see totaling two thousand six hundred. And then I have a future expenditure, would I, which I have an appointment for, uh, one of our frontline trucks next week. And it's gonna be about a twenty-six hundred dollar bill for, uh, to replace the springs on that truck. So I forecasted out and for that, so hopefully, we don't have any more big expenditures. We've serviced all our equipment. Um, I mean, if something else breaks along the way between now and the end of the year. Uh, if we can't afford to wait, uh, we can't wait, you know, everything that we have is a frontline unit. With the exception of our, uh, spare backup plow truck. And, you know, we can't really afford to be without anything for a long period of time. So, yeah, if you just kind of scroll down at your leisure and you can see the different items, I forecast, I just forecasted out my budget the best way I could. And trying not to. Just doing the best with what I got. Any questions? Wanna see the other one? Snow report, snow report, we have quite a bit of money left. I can back out of this if you want. I think, stop share, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we go. Go back into this. You want snow budget? And I hit share screen again. Amanda, I'm getting better at this. How's that? We got the snow, snow removal?
Yep.
Yes.
Everybody see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, uh, in the snow removal. Right now, we have, I have a forecasted surplus of, uh, nineteen thousand dollars, give or take. Um. And, but we have an over expenditure on our, on our overtime. So, by, well, we got another storm coming up, so, uh, this sixteen thousand currently that we've spent as of the twenty-third. Uh, today, that's when I put it in, cause Sherry got me all the, uh, what we've spent to this point. Um. So we'll have, any other snow, uh, events, will, anything that goes into overtime will. so we'll have, any other snow, uh, events, will, anything that goes into overtime will add to this. Uh, so, I don't know. We had, uh, twenty twenty-one events, twenty-three events and twenty-one events, uh, snow events we actually responded to. Um, whether we went out and treated and went home, or we stayed all night and did two, three applications, four applications, uh, you know, the, the years of, uh, fifteen events, you know, light winters, they happen occasionally, but I would consider that you, um, think about areas where we need to, uh, make sure we have enough funding, cuz you never know when we, we're gonna need a little bit more. Uh, the salt in my report, you saw that, uh, um, last year, we had a little bit of monies left over in discussion with Eric, because of the volatile market. I thought it would be a good idea that we, uh, planned on and spending some of that money in stockpile salt, which we did, which helped us a lot this year. Um, as the, the market changed, and vendors and where we're gonna get it was a, became an ordeal, which I don't, hopefully, we got that ironed out for the, for next year and the foreseeable future. Um, but, you know, that could change too. Um, I only see salt prices increasing. Um, if we have money left over at the end of the season, and, uh, after everything's been ironed out, if we can continue having a salt pile or a stockpile of some of the salt that we need for the next season, it would be a good idea, I feel, just cuz it, it gives us a good starting point into the next season. Sometimes when you order salt, you don't get it the next day, it's a week, a week later or so, and you, you know, you don't wanna run out. So that's the long and short of it, unless you have any questions, specific questions.
I have a question, Jay.
Yeah.
I, it's not on this, but, um, I've been reading some articles about some towns increasing costs of transfer station fees due to the increasing cost of disposing of the trash and all that. Do you see that coming down the pike for Andover?
So, I can answer that question. Um, that's actually more of an Eric question, so currently, we are fortunate in that we have a contract with Willie Race that runs through twenty twenty-four. Um, what I will tell you is that what we're paying now, uh, per ton per disposal is not, is much less than a current market rate. Um, and our cost per, uh, per pull um, is also quite a bit lower than current market rate. So you can anticipate in the twenty twenty-four cycle, our costs for the transfer station going up a minimum of twenty-five percent um, for our maj- majority expenses, which is the cost of actually hauling and the cost to dispose of materials. Now, on the recycling side, we renegotiate those contracts every year. Um, we have those contracts renegotiated now already for the upcoming year. Um, the, there's a few things that went up a fair bit, but, but in the grand scheme of things, those are relatively minor costs. Are the majority of our cost is the cost to haul bulky waste and household trash and the cost per ton for disposal of those. So presuming, uh, our usage doesn't increase dramatically, you can assume our costs are gonna go up three to four percent based on our contract, um, for this year and next year, in the year after that, you know, we're gonna be looking at a twenty-five to forty percent increase in transfer station costs.
Would that also impact employee, not employees, but the people in town having to pay more?
Um, so I suggested the Board of Selectmen, they should raise the, the fee to sixty dollars per uh, household this year, um, but they've chosen not to do that. Um, currently, we take in, in fees for the sticker program, roughly, uh, it works out to just under a quarter of the total expenses of the transfer station. So the, the sticker, the fees that people pay are, for practical purposes, twenty-five percent of the cost of running the station.
Okay, and they can't up the, you're in a contract, so they can't really change the contract?
Uh,
For a couple of years?
No, they're locked in through twenty twenty-four. One of the things that after, once we get through this budget year, cuz we're not doing anything on it this budget year, um, we probably should have a serious conversation with the company that bought out Willie Waste. They've indicated that they would be willing to make a deal with us um, if we agree to renegotiate early to kind of spread that expense out, so it's not all a big hit in one year. Um, you know, but overall, it's slightly cheaper over a, say, four-year period to renegotiate early than it would be to wait until this contract extends and then deal with one really big jump. But we would be trading off more expense next year for less expense in future years. Um, so if that's something the board wants to consider, we can consider renegotiating that for next year. Um, but, you know, we're not under any obligation to.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions while we're here? All right, well, hearing none, let's move on to agenda item number twelve, which is public speak. You don't have any members of the public, I think, that are available, or anybody wish to speak? Okay, hearing none, we can move on to our last agenda item, which is adjournment. Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I think that was Louise made the motion to adjourn the meeting, and Linda seconded, we have any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one, no one? Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion passes, all right, thank you very much, we have a meeting next week, special meeting to discuss the, uh, budget, um, so we'll see what would, how things go in the next few days. Again, if anybody has anything specific they'd like to see from Eric and Sherry, uh, regarding the budget, uh, please drop them an email and I would suggest copy the rest of the board members as well. Thank you, everybody, uh, thanks Eric, thanks Sherry, thanks Jay, thanks Amanda.
Just remember, I'm not working in the office, but I am, I am available like normal, you can reach me on my cell phone, you can reach me via email. Um, I'm basically working full-time at this point, uh, mostly remotely, I will hopefully be transitioning back to working uh, part of the day in Town Hall, um, starting next week, at least a couple of days a week. Um, you know, but if there's something you need from me, let me know and I will try to provide it, right?
And he knows where to find me, too.
And I know where to find Sherry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.